There you go. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 28th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, next move on to roll call, Kristy.
Mr. Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Garnier.
Here.
Morrisette.
Here.
Watson.
John, can you check on the master mute with Councilmember Watson?
We don't have a video for him either.
I just brought Hal in. Unmute him here. Hal, are you there?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Thank you.
We'll let him work on his video.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we're on approval of minutes from July 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were, we got Hal all ready to go?
I'm on, yep.
Okay, sorry, Hal.
Nope, your call good.
Next move on to approval of minutes from July 14th regular meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Kristy, on the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Garnier.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $490,166.44, subject to the comptroller.
Second, Watson.
Okay, questions or comments on this? Okay, Kristy, we have first and second on the approval of the bills.
Ms. Odine. Downing. I'm sorry, Sean, was that an aye? Thank you.
Aye.
Garnier. Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kristy. Okay, next move on to public comments. Tonight, we're going to be expecting quite a few people coming to do public comments, and I'm assuming, John, we have people online too wanting to get in?
Mr. Mayor, we, we have, city clerk is helping with that list. We have the in-person, she's going to call in-person up first, and then we'll facilitate the online.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Yep, that sounds good. So when it comes time for people's turn to speak, come on up. If you're, if you, if you need to take your mask off to speak, that's fine. Everybody's far enough away where that should be okay. Remember, with as many people as we have, we're going to try to keep the time limit to a minute. And so let's go ahead and please state your name and your address for us.
Council chambers are muted.
Oh, yep. Hang on a second.
Is this a trick? Silencing me? Are you ready now?
Yep.
Bonnie Jones, 2 and 74950th Street. In just two weeks, 2,124 people have signed a petition for indoor mandatory mask use at all businesses, places of progress in River Falls. The folks inside who are signed include nurses, doctors, clerks, teachers, senior citizens, young adults, parents, and business owners for the reason one nurse stated. I am reluctant to go into a business that does not require masks. My husband is a physician who works for the front end of COVID care. We can't believe that people aren't willing to wear a mask. These folks are listening to the CDC, the male clinic, and the U.S. Surgeon General, who all agree, wear a mask to stop the spread of COVID-19. That is why we formed a petition. I'm here tonight because I want our community to stay healthy. To do that, we may have to surrender a little bit of individual rights for the greater good of the whole community. Face covering has helped stop the spread of COVID-19, getting one if everyone wears one. Many of our businesses are great, wearing masks and asking customers to also do that. Thirty-four states require public indoor mandatory face mask use. In Wisconsin, it has been left to counties and cities. Ladies and gentlemen, it's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, I'll print out the petition, and it's also online if you want to look at it.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Barbara Soler, 620 West Walmart, River Falls. I'm here to tell my story, but I also speak for the people that are my age. I will be 90 this year. And it happens that I spent some time overseas and acquired tuberculosis, which I was treated for, but I do have a damage load. In which case, if I were to get the disease, I would be one of those people that might die. But I also speak for the many older people that are in River Falls who say the same thing to me. They're afraid to go out. If there are no mandated masks, I will not be permitted to be free, and although I'm old, I'm active. The other thing is I'm on the Campus Ministry Board, and I know that the campus, the university's plan to open, and that students will be there, they will be required to wear masks. But if they are not mandated, I do not believe that all those young people will wear masks up and down when they go shopping. In the beginning, when I could see that there were people who weren't wearing masks, I asked in many stores, why they were allowing them to come in without masks? And they said, well, we can't do that. So I feel if they're mandated, then that gives the stores more authority to do what's needed to do, same with overalls.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Eric Amundson, 500, Marcella Court, River Falls, Wisconsin. I just want to give my opinion, as are everyone else's, on my opposition to mandating masks in the city of River Falls. While it's a hot-button topic, there is obviously plenty of information out there, either supporting either side, whether you're in favor of wearing a mask or opposing it. There's plenty of information to support either side, whether it be scientific data, you know, there's plenty of scientific data that proves that the masks that a lot of people are wearing are basically useless. So I don't have a problem with those who support it, and I would hope that people that oppose it don't have a problem with those that oppose either. There seems to be a lot of shaming going on, and I would just ask for unity throughout the city and understanding, and with businesses as well. I also personally think that this is not a city issue, but is a state or a federal issue. And then I think that just for unity and ease of understanding where masks either are to be worn or cannot be worn, if true so, that it become either from a state level or a federal level. So that's all that I have on this one. Mr. Mayor, I do have one other topic that I wanted to address. If you'd like me to address that now, I can. Otherwise, I can wait until others have chosen to speak. It is a different topic.
Thanks. If you could, that'd be great.
Do you want me to wait or speak now, Mr. Mayor?
No, why don't you wait till everybody else gets done with the, with the mask.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Semai. I live at 517 North Bay Street here in River Falls. So we know the statistics, over 50,000 cases in Wisconsin, over 900 people dead in Wisconsin. And Wisconsin Department of Health has marked Pierce County and St. Croix County as highly active for weeks now. I wear a mask to protect all of you. And hopefully, you're wearing a mask to protect me and my family. That's all this is about, is you governing us, helping us keep our city safe. When I go to the stores and I see that there's a mask mandate, or not, not a mandate, but a sign, he's wearing masks, and I go into the stores, some people are, but many aren't. Because it's not governed, because it's not unified. I ask you, please, please do this here. I have taken my business out into Minnesota because I feel safer in Minnesota than I do here in my hometown, and that's very sad. It's just about protecting each other. It's a health crisis. It's nothing to do with politics or anything else. It's about our health, and it's in your hands. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and City Council folks. My name is Dan Semai. That was my better half. And I live at 517 North Bay Street, River Falls. I've been a member of this community for 34 years, and I've enjoyed it. You know, this really isn't rocket science, because my wife said this, we're in the middle of a pandemic, a world health pandemic. And, you know, anything that we can do to help that and advocate for health practices is great. I'm at risk. My wife is at risk. I don't have a spleen, so I don't have an immune system. And when I wear a mask, I'm protecting you. When you wear a mask, you're protecting me and my wife. You know, both of us, when this economic downfall had started, and businesses here in River Falls are struggling, we tried to support them, doing takeout in every which way we could. But I feel so inconsistent right now with, you know, many places in River Falls, some doing the mask, some doing not the mask. I'll spend my money in Minnesota because they're doing it right. And, you know, a lot of my friends are doing the same as we do this. I'm not looking for, you know, superheroes. I'm, I'm looking for you folks, city council members, to be real heroes and advocate. And the etymology of the word hero from the ancient Greek means protector and defender. Let's do our part. Protect and defend our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for in-person? Amy?
Regarding the masking before we move into the other comments that are public and are present. So John's going to bring her in.
So I brought in UW River Falls Chancellor Connie Foster. She'll need to be on.
Hello?
Yes.
Yep. Can you, can you hear me? All right, not sure if the video is working, but yes, hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Connie Foster, interim chancellor at UW River Falls, 410 South Third Street. UW River Falls enjoys a positive relationship with the city of River Falls. We are committed to keeping our employees and students safe and to helping keep this community safe as we pursue our educational mission during this time of pandemic. UWRF is creating the safest possible environment on our campus. We have made hundreds of modifications to our operations and are investing resources to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 on and beyond our campus. We plan to foster a community-wide culture of health and safety emphasizing three main points. Wash your hands, maintain safe distances, and cover your face. Face covings or face coverings are now required at UWRF in all indoor public spaces and outside when physical distancing is not possible. We hope that businesses in town who benefit from our student and employee customer base will enforce policies and procedures consistent with what is found on campus, such as requiring face masks. They would then be more likely to enjoy a robust business for the entire academic year and not just for a short time by helping us avoid future lockdown or safer-at-home scenarios. UW River Falls strongly supports the resolution recommending the use of face coverings in public in the city of River Falls. Thank you.
Thanks.
That was the only online comment that we had, was able to find.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just ask a question.
Yep.
I know I, excuse me, I had communication today from, from several people who were.
Eric, can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Several people who were mailing in or emailing in information to us.
Oh, Scott.
Yeah, it's me. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I've had, I've had communication.
I can't, I can't really hear you.
Okay, I've had communication today from several people who were emailing the clerk with things that they'd like to have read into the minutes. How are we, how are we going to address that?
Well, I think, I think hopefully everybody that sent stuff sent it to all the council members, so everybody has seen whatever anybody has, has sent to us about opinions or comments on this. Unless, unless people have a different idea of what we can do.
Okay. Because I believe they, they had statements that they wanted read into the minutes, or statements that they felt needed to be.
If, if any of the council members have somebody that expressly asked them to read something, then that's fine. If anybody has anything like that.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to read?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a public comment.
Yep.
We received numerous emails today. It was about, you know, it was split down the middle as far as people in favor and people opposed to mask ordinances in the city limits. Many expressed their concerns, why it's important and why it's not important. I just wanted to let you know that it was, it was pretty similar as far as the responses opposed and for, so.
Okay, thanks. I, I, I experienced the same thing. Does, was there any other council members had anything wanted to say about any emails they received? Anything, anybody request that they read something?
Like to make a statement, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
I have received several threatening emails today, one from a Clint Eastwood threatening to asking me if I would like to meet my God and know how to get to heaven permanently. And several other comments posted online threatening to rearrange my dental work. If this is how the opposition to mask ordinances choose to behave, I have great questions about their behavior and everything that they are stating. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay. I guess that's it for that, Eric. Yes, go ahead. Ms. Odine?
Oh, thank you very much. I just wanted to say that, like Mr. Garnier, I got a lot of emails today, and I wanted to thank you for encouraging people to write to us. I just feel that they had a better opportunity to express themselves, and we had more opportunity to listen to their concerns. So, and I, I just wanted people to know that we, we hear you and we appreciate your feedback.
Thanks, Diane. I think that goes for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, before you close public comment, I believe Mr. Amundson had one more thing.
Yep. Yep, he's next. Is everybody done with this part of it? Okay, Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again to yourself and council members as well. I do appreciate your time again, Eric Amundson, 500, Marcella Court, in River Falls. Mr. Mayor, I want, if I could please, just a little over a minute this time, because I feel that this is a pretty important issue. And in fact, Councilmember Plunkett just rose kind of issued with some of the things that he was talking about. And I'm actually here, I, I'm disgusted by some of the things that I have seen and read this afternoon and this evening from Councilmember Plunkett. While I was not one of the people that have written to Mr. Plunkett nor threatened him, I can understand the frustration. Councilmember Plunkett has found and taken it upon himself to bully city residents and also certain businesses throughout the city of River Falls. I'm not just here as a citizen tonight, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm also here as the agent for Bros. Sports Bar and Grill, which is located in River Falls. Mr. Plunkett has taken it upon himself to call citizens rancid tubs of ignorant contagion. Mr. Plunkett has also, let's see, there's another one here, taken it upon himself to call residents, which you guys would also know as constituents of River Falls, festering piles of pestilence, spreading disgusting diseases. I also have another one here that is referencing businesses, and I take exception to Councilmember Plunkett telling me that I do not care about how our business is run, that we are, that we don't care. I can tell you 100% that we are following CDC guidelines and certain recommendations. We in fact have gone above and beyond what has been recommended. These are recommendations, not mandates, not ordinances or laws, recommendations, and we go above and beyond. We, we care extremely about our customers and those who patronize our business, because without them, we wouldn't be in business. And I'm disgusted, Councilmember Plunkett, by your words and your actions towards people. Councilmembers and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Plunkett has also taken it upon himself that he feels that he can threaten my license at our business, that he can take it away. He states that some in the industry are forgetting this fact, that that privilege will go bye-bye, possibly permanently for many servers, owners, and agents if this continues.
Hey, Eric, Eric, can I, can I please cut in for a second here?
Absolutely.
Um, believe me, we're all aware of Mr. Plunkett's comments, but if I could encourage you to please go to hold of the city and create a formal complaint on this and kind of take it that way.
I can.
I, I, I understand your compassion about this, or your passion about this. I, I really do.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can do that, and I appreciate that. I think the reason that I came here to thank Mr. Mayor and council is because I actually wanted this to be on the record. I wanted this to be on, on a council record, that it's there for the minutes and other things. If you'd like me to stop, Mr. Mayor, I will absolutely abide by your wishes, and I will stop. I didn't have much left, but I can definitely, can definitely abide by your wishes and move forward in another manner.
Thanks, Eric. I think, I think you've gotten your point across. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Take care. Okay, so Amy, is there anybody else there with anything?
Hi, my name is Craig Peters, and I, my home is at 586 Hamilton Court in River Falls. City council members and representatives, city council members are representatives of the citizens of River Falls. Council members take an oath to adhere to ethical standards. I believe all the person Ben Plunkett has violated these ethical standards by using his position to intimidate and bully residents and local business owners. In a post directed to Main Street manager Tiff Joy on the River Falls Community Facebook page, Mr. Plunkett wrote, and I quote, "A liquor license is a privilege, not a right. Some in this industry are forgetting this fact. That privilege will go bye-bye, possibly permanently, for many servers, owners, and agents if this continues." He continues to write, "Just like I give people in this group warnings, I'm giving those in your industry a big warning now. Your license is at risk. Stop playing around." In another communication message written to local resident Chrissy Engel, Mr. Plunkett wrote, and I also quote, "I urge you to stop being a rancid tub of ignorant contagion and start acting like you care about life and health of others." His rhetoric is intimidating and abusive, and the, the list of incidents are many. This is not a mask issue. This is an issue concerning the ethical behavior of an elected official. I realize no one is perfect and mistakes will be made, but there has been repeated intimidation communication from Mr. Plunkett to city residents who are only voicing their opinion on a subject they were invited to do so. I have two, I have two questions for the city council. The first one is, is Mr. Plunkett's behavior of using his position to intimidate and bully residents, breaking ethical guidelines he swore by oath to uphold as a city council member? And the second question, if Mr. Plunkett has violated ethical standards, what is the council's recourse for his actions? And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. And I, I encourage you to, if you need, if you feel the need, please go ahead and file with the city a complaint.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, well. No, no. No more in-person.
Amy, anybody else on, for comments?
Mr. Mayor, there's nobody else here signed up to comment.
Okay, okay, thanks, Jason. Okay, so let's move on then. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. The first thing is acknowledging the following minutes. The River Falls Housing Authority from 610, Park and Rec Advisory Board from 219. Our next one is a resolution regarding the 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. This is a report that we submit to the Wisconsin DNR. Next one is a resolution designating the official city newspaper. Our next one is a resolution disallowing the claim. This would disallow a claim against the city of River Falls. Next one is a resolu, a resolution approving a $500,000 WPPI loan for electric utility. This is a, this would be a loan for 10 years with 0% interest in the amount of $500,000 to support our AMI electric meter implementation. Next one is a resolution ratifying the chief of police proclamations. And the last one is a resolution adopting findings of fact, a conclusion of law for special use permit. This will be for the, this will be for the approved, the decision form for the denial of the special use permit for 1165 County Road M. Does anybody need to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll consent agenda, agenda item number three.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items excluding number three.
Second, Watson.
Is there any questions or comments on the rest of these? Okay, Kristy, we have a first and a second on all the consent agenda except number three.
Mr. Garn. Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morrisette.
Aye.
Thank you. Downing.
Aye.
Odine. Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Downing, you polled number three.
Thank you, Mary. 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. I just wanted our utility department had to talk. I just wanted our utility department had to talk, Kevin Westhouse, to briefly talk about where we are today and what we're working towards because our council has valued working hard at getting clean drinking water for our entire community. And this, I believe, is going to get us to an A rating over a period of time. I'd like him to speak where we're at and how it's going to get us there and how we've worked hard to get there. Thanks, Mayor.
Kevin, are you in here somewhere?
Yes, I am. And I also have as well.
Okay, thanks Ron.
To this man and Ron, I would like to talk a little bit about the compliance maintenance report and a little bit where we're at this year and what we're doing to rectify the one area of our weakness. Ron, are you on?
Okay.
Yes.
Ron, okay, Ron, why don't you go ahead and talk to Sean and the council about the letter grades this year for the compliance maintenance report and then what we're doing to rectify the issues and where we're at with construction.
Yeah, as you can, yeah. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, as you can see in the report, we've been dropping and are influent loading for, I think, the last three years. Now it's been going down and that's directly attributable to the development in the community. I mean, we're getting more influent into the plant, which means more solids and that raises our pounds of BOD we take in every year. So, but as you can see in the report also, it hasn't affected our effluent treatment. So we're still in really good shape as far as our effluent goes. We've never really been, I mean, we're treating the water as well as we ever have when we're discharging to the river. And we are in the process right now, we begun to plan upgrade. It started in April. We're about halfway through. We have one of the ditches aeration done in it. We just got our screen in today. Our blowers are being set. Completion project is scheduled for the end of this year. So yeah, we're right on track and after that, after all those upgrades are completed this year, that should take us through to 2040 before we have to worry about another upgrade as far as our BOD loading.
So I'll summarize, I'll summarize that for you, Sean. The wastewater treatment plant is in very good shape. Our product into the river is good. Our solids are down going to Ellsworth. The area of concern was how much oxygen we were getting into the product. The new blowers, the new systems are really going to rectify that issue. We should get our letter grade back up to an A in that section next year. So I thank the council for helping us with that investment to ensure that that facility is top notch. Thanks for the question, Sean.
Thanks Kevin. That A rating is the objective we've been working towards getting at and I appreciate what both you and Ron have been helping the council achieve as well as everybody else in that process. So thank you and I appreciate the council's support on this topic as well. Thank you.
I appreciate your support for things that aren't always that exciting like infrastructure. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval for the resolution authorizing the submission of the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to Department of Natural Resources.
Second. Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
First and a second, any other questions or comments on this? No? So Christie, we have a first and a second on the consent agenda number three, the resolution regarding the 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
Mr. Morsett.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Gagne. I'm not seeing Chris. Did we lose him?
John, I had a message from Mr. Gagne that he lost connection.
Okay. I will look for him to come back in.
Okay.
Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
So.
Gagne is an aye.
Yep, you got the others, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next move on to ordinance resolution. I'll take a motion on the resolution recommending the use of face coverings in public in the city of River Falls.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution relating to COVID-19 Public Health Emergency recommending the use of face mask coverings in public in the city of River Falls.
Second.
Christie, did you get that? First and second?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, questions or comments? Would ever like to go first? Oh Diane, go ahead. Go Ms. Odine.
Yes, I've got, yeah, first I wanted to address the resolution, which I think is, I'd say a few things about it that I really appreciate. I really appreciate that it reinforces that businesses are able to make their own rules and ask people to leave and if they don't, those persons can be cited for trespassing. That's always been true, but it's a good thing to remind people. Second, I am really glad to see that it includes some cities' time and effort in creating an education and compliance campaign, for lack of a better word. I think that the goal here is for people to wear masks. I think that there are many ways to achieve that and one of the best is just education and frankly peer pressure. And anyway, so, but I'd also, and I'd also like to offer a couple of amendments. Mr. Mayor, you've seen my amendments and I can make them individually or together as you prefer.
Yeah, why don't you make them together? We can vote on it together then, I'm assuming.
Okay, okay. The first amendment is to add a whereas clause. And my addition would be this. Whereas mask wearing and social distancing are important tools to help slow the spread of COVID-19 in River Falls, thereby keeping hospitals stable, saving lives and keeping local businesses open. That's my first proposal. And the second is two amendments to section seven, which is the effective date and expiration. I would add the phrase amended or to unless specifically rescinded, so it would read unless specifically amended or rescinded by city council. And then at the end of that section, I would add this sentence. Unless rescinded, this resolution. Data regarding the spread of COVID-19 in the city and St. Croix and Pierce counties following the adoption of this resolution, comma, at the council's regularly scheduled meetings in August of 2020 and thereafter at least monthly. And if there is a second, I will speak to the amendments.
Okay.
I'll second that for Diane.
Okay.
Thank you Scott.
Go ahead Diane.
Yeah, the purpose of these is just to remember that this is one of the mask wearing and social distancing are tools that we can use. Our goal is to save lives, promotes public health and promotes our public economy, both of those things. And at the end, my purpose in suggesting that it come before the council is that I want to keep this top of mind for the council, keep the COVID data that our staff is already distributing to us on the council agenda and before both viewers and the council and also to see if the resolution is working and whether or not there are other steps we can or wish to take.
Okay.
Just a quick comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
I mean to walk, talk over you. Just a quick question, and I don't think it, I don't, I don't think we need to amend it or anything, but one of the things in the dashboard that Ms. Odine's proposing that I'd like to see, I know we've got some information on there today about the percentage of hospital beds and their occupancy, but I think that's a wider, I think it's a 15 county, maybe staff can help me out here. I don't know, Assistant City of Mr. Stroud can maybe help us out here, but I'd like to see that more local. Maybe, I think really the only two hospitals that are in our immediate area would be River Falls and Hudson. I don't know if we can boil that down because if we're going to be making decisions based on, on the, on any rises, I'd really like to see how our local and our two local, for lack of a better word, hospitals are handling capacity. So I don't think we need to amend it. I don't, I think that's a nuance in the information, but I just think it's a, something I'd like to see in that weekly or bi-weekly data that we're getting about occupant, number of beds available and the occupancy percentage of those beds, just in those two hospitals. I don't know if that's possible or not.
Jason?
I can probably answer that too.
Scott?
I think the, it may be 13 counties or something to that effect, Western Wisconsin region. And the Hudson and River Falls Hospital, we certainly can try to get that data, but I think we should be cautious about relying on the micro data a little bit too much because frankly as COVID patients are identified and enter the healthcare system, we've seen them moved around to wherever, you know, wherever the level of care they can provide and frankly, a lot of them have been moved into the, into the Twin Cities hospitals that have, have some floors or things set up to handle COVID patients. So although it is, I think of interest to know what's going on locally. We'd actually, staff would actually like to try to add a better metric for the metro area rather than just having the state of Wisconsin hospital data, which is helpful, but not as helpful as where most patients in River Falls are going to end up is, is in a hospital bed likely in the cities. Then that's not 100% the case, but.
And I get that, but maybe, maybe to the, maybe we can find something between two hospitals and 13 hospitals that that's a better measure. That's, that's more my point.
Councilor Morsett, I think it's, I'm fairly confident that what we can provide to you regularly would be some availability and capacity data for Northwest Wisconsin Healthcare Emergency Revenue Coalition, which would include hospitals, you know, our local hospital as well as hospitals in the immediate area that we transport to.
Okay. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Beerstead.
Ms. Odine, the last sentence that you read was breaking up at the beginning, so I didn't quite hear that last piece.
Okay. I'd be happy to reread it. Unless rescinded, this resolution will be reviewed by the city council in light of data regarding the spread of COVID-19 in the city and St. Croix and Pierce counties following, following the adoption of this resolution. Council's regularly scheduled meetings in August of 2020 and thereafter at least monthly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of the amendments Councilmember Odine put forward in the resolution with them. However, I do not personally feel as a council member that this resolution goes far enough. I believe that we need an ordinance. Certainly everyone in our community is worthy of their physical and mental well-being. And that physical and mental well-being is put at great risk when a typical cold virus is .01% mortality rate and COVID-19 is a full 1% mortality rate. That's absolutely lethal and has life-altering effects that last forever for people who get hit. So we need to keep in mind that with a large amount of people coming from the cities to our city and more will be coming in because of their ordinance, that we need to put our fists up. We're in a fight against a virus that is absolutely 100% lethal. And we have college students in the thousands coming to our city soon, as well as our schools opening up. We have a responsibility to them and our entire community to do what is right for them. And I know with your guidance as a mayor and our council that we will be able to find something within reason to satisfy the public health for our citizens in our city. Thank you.
Thanks Sean. Okay, anybody else have any comments on the amendments? Yes Diane.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may speak to Mr. Downing's point.
Yes.
... dissipate. I think it is possible, maybe even likely, that there is some sort of ordinance on our agenda in two weeks. So nothing in this amendment would prevent that from happening.
Great, okay. Thanks Diane. So anybody have any comments on, anything else on this resolution?
We've got comments on others, but Mr. Mayor, point of order, wouldn't we vote on the amendments and then go back to our comments?
We can do that, yes.
Agreed.
Okay. We have first, we, oops, I'm sorry. We have first and a second on the amendment. Christie?
Mr. Beerstead.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Plunkett.
Yes.
Odine. Gagne. Sorry, was that a yes?
I think you're muted, Chris.
Watson. Morsett.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is John. Chris, Gagne, can you hear you?
I am muted myself and I was muted.
All right, we're good.
Okay, Christie, you got that?
I have Mr. Gagne as yes.
Okay, so that passes. So back to the regular, the original resolution. So now it's time for more comments on this. Who's ever next? Who'd like to go next? Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also find that a strong recommendation will not be adequate to encourage and enforce the behavior that is going to be necessary to prevent further pandemic damage, sickness, pestilence and death in our community. I will then speak to several of the specific exemptions in this resolution. First of all, what we can tell from the data is that indoor activities and the patterns of transmission, the pathology and epidemiology of this disease, is that indoor locations add a significant degree of risk to any interaction that involves multiple people. Outdoor activities pose a much lower degree of risk. The face covering ordinance or resolution, in my view, should limit itself to indoor areas in the city. But we should not provide a broad degree of exemptions and we should limit this to all indoor areas in the city past what this ordinance covers. I see no reason why the university students and employees and the school district employees and students should not also be protected by actions that we are taking. Specifically, we've got subset I. We know that social distancing, particularly when exercising, is not a magic way to present, prevent COVID transmission, that six feet is not a barrier for COVID transmission. We also have observed from the numerous outbreaks related to eating and drinking establishments in our city, that individuals eating and drinking did not gain a magic shield that prevents the transmission of COVID. Unfortunately, a pandemic is not something that only affects one individual. A pandemic is something that an individual can spread to other members in the community, including people living in our senior living centers and our other facilities with vulnerable populations in the city. The specific exemptions leave a gaping hole in any recommendation and most certainly any practice that would make this far less effective as we have observed from the multiple outbreaks at bars in our less effective, as we have observed from the multiple outbreaks at bars in our community.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Oh, sorry about that, Sean.
Go ahead. There's a couple of things that, um, we've been informed of just recently that I don't believe most people are aware of. Uh, the CDC didn't originally recommend wearing masks because they needed to procure them for healthcare workers, because there was a shortage. Now they're recommending the usage of them. Also, the bigger consequence we're looking at here, that is, that results in lethal results and higher transmission rates, is the fact that this is a part aerosol spreading, but a big part of that comes in the form of droplets. And masks reduce the droplet transmission up to 50%, which is a significant measure of reduction. However, it does not stop the virus, but it will significantly stop the community's spread in River Falls if we take a lifesaving approach that is proactive to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Morsett.
Um, the, the first, the first comment, and I could have made this during public comment, but the first comment that I know for certain, we don't know everything here for certain, but there's one thing I know for certain, and that is people are tired of the divisive attitudes that everybody is taking over this topic and just about every other social topic out there today. We've got to be, we've got to be kinder to people, and we've got to listen to other people's points of view. There are seven different voting members on this council. I hazard a guess, we probably have five or six different points of view on this topic, but I would hope that we could be civil and have civil conversations and not bully and, and call names of people and do that stuff. I'm disgusted by the social media barrage that's out there. I'm disgusted by some of the emails I've received telling me how stupid I am if I don't vote one way or the other. Um, it's, it really disturbs me from a, from a standpoint of, of trying to provide some leadership in the town. Um, so I'll move on to my next topic. Um, we, at the April meeting, organizational meeting every year, appoint a, a city health director. Uh, we used to appoint Dr. David Wilhelm, and, but more recently, we've appointed health directors of both Pierce and St. Croix County. Um, to date, uh, we, we appoint those people to provide advice to the council directly. I realize that staff has very frequent communication with them, but one, one thing that I think we could do better with the, the health directors is have them provide us more direct, uh, information. I see in the staff report that we've got, uh, that there's, there's a comment to the fact that they communicate frequently with Health Director AZ Snyder for Pierce County. Um, I think, again, that, that we need, we need more direct communication from those people that we appoint to provide us advice. Um, I, I'm a little, uh, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have that direction directly from, from AZ. I do understand that staff is, is in communication with them, um, but I'd, I'd like to see something more formal when it comes to these types of things. Um, I've talked to a lot of people today. We've all had a lot of emails today. I've had several phone calls on both sides of the, on both sides of the, uh, position. Um, there are some real gut-wrenching stories out there. I think there's some very good points for, uh, for why the mask ordinance should not be, uh, or an ordinance should not be put in place. I think there's some good reasons for why they should be. Um, I think we've got to watch the numbers, as Councilmember Odean has, has said. I agree with her, keeping, uh, keeping an eye on those totals, and so we know, we know where we're headed. Um, the public is looking for us to provide some direction here, and we've got to, we've got to be thoughtful about how we move forward. I think the resolution is a good step. Um, I think that the business owners, i- i- if there's, if there's people that are looking for so-called cover, uh, this is, this is one way to do it. If they, if they want to point to it and say, hey, the city's passed a resolution. If they were afraid before about enforcing, uh, masks in their business or their establishments, now they can point to this and, and use this. At the end of the day, you know, I, I trust people to make the right decisions and do the right things. A lot of places are already doing this, um, and I encourage them to really consider, uh, this resolution and, and using those masks and requiring them in their business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Make sure you're not muted.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, my experience with the interaction of the public I've talked with was remarkably not part of, which is why I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid to back an ordinance, because I did not have a remarkable amount of people saying that they did not want an ordinance. What I saw was community leaders of faith, community leaders who are teachers, people from all walks of life. And we all have to remember that everybody ages. Certainly, we're all worthy of our health. And that group of people, uh, which is nonpartisan, reached out to me as well as other community members. And I see a, a big, a big amount of support for a responsible ordinance. And I don't believe, uh, an ordinance would last, um, as long as other council members think it might, but we have no way of predicting that. But from what studies of other countries have, it would last several weeks. I imagine it would not go more than, uh, one to two months max, would be my guess. But there's no way of actually predicting anything. And I appreciate every point of view. I thank you for people who've written to me, people I have not had a chance to properly respond to yet. And I appreciate what the rest of the council also had to say in their experiences. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Okay, who's next?
Mr. Biersted. Mr. Watson.
Oh, hang on, hang on. Mr. Biersted, I see in your hand first.
Thank you. I work in Minnesota, and, um, everybody over there is supposed to be wearing masks now, and, uh, a lot of people are trying. But what I've noticed from people is the more masks there are around, the more people congregate. In other words, they're behaving because they have a mask on as if there's nothing wrong. And so I'm concerned that forcing masks can actually embolden people to get within that social distancing that we're supposed to, to also, uh, be aware of. So, you know, I have concerns both ways. And I think before, I would be interested in any sort of a mandate or an ordinance, I'd need to understand how this could be enforced. Um, we can't have, I don't think we can have the police running around tackling everybody who doesn't have a mask on. I don't know how we enforce this. So to me, that's a very big part of the discussion. I don't see how it's possible.
Okay. Mr. Watson, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I, I also echo Mr. Morsett's, uh, comments just about, uh, the fact that we, uh, need to maintain a, uh, an atmosphere of hospitality towards each other and, and during conversations like this. Um, second, um, like Mr. Downing, I've, I, I've heard, uh, from community leaders kind of across the spectrum in, at the university, uh, in the school district, uh, in the, uh, religious community and, and teachers and so forth. And, uh, I, I'm not going to say overwhelming, but by probably a two to one margin in, in the, in the, uh, communications that have been coming, uh, my way, uh, people have been, um, supporting, um, a mask, um, requirement. Um, and then today, I, I just remind you, we just got a, um, submitted in, 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 in today's record, uh, a, uh, petition with over 2,000 signatures, uh, on it, uh, supporting a mask ordinance, which is, if you consider the voters, uh, the number of people who typically vote, uh, that's quite a large number for River Falls. Certainly many more times than voted for me. Um, I think, uh, my, you know, my understanding right now is that health officials are almost universally in agreement that wearing a mask can slow the virus's spread. Um, and if everyone in the United States wore a mask in public, the virus could be under control most likely in one to two months. Now, that doesn't mean the virus is going to go away, but the virus could be brought down to a level of control where, uh, we could begin to, um, have a more normal life situation. Uh, so in my opinion, everybody's got to get on board with a mask because that's the only way we're going to get through this thing as quickly as possible. It's not a polit, wearing a mask is not a political statement. Um, I, as some of the folks mentioned earlier in their comments, I wear a mask to protect you, and you wear a mask to protect me. It's just simply a sign of respect for our fellow citizens and a, uh, sign of caring for other people in our community. It's, uh, that is exactly what it's all about. No one says that a mask prevents you from getting COVID if somebody walks up to you and breathes on top of you or gets within your social distancing space. We're wearing the masks to protect the other person, and, uh, and we're doing our duty as citizens, uh, when we do that. Um, I don't believe that mandating a mask would be government overreach. I think a primary purpose of government is to promote and protect the healthy, the health and the welfare of the citizenry, citizenry. We pass all kinds of laws to protect the health and welfare of the citizens. We inspect businesses for safety. Uh, we've, people have to wear seat belts. We ask the police to enforce those seat belt laws. We ask the fire chief to enforce safety laws, uh, related to, uh, to fire safety. So we, I believe, can relatively smoothly, uh, take on the enforcement issue. I don't think that that is a game stopper or a showstopper. Um, you know, and for a long time, it's been no shirt, no shoes, no service at almost every establishment that I've ever been to in River Falls. And I don't think that, um, you know, adding masks to that list for a, a, a period of time while we deal with the public health crisis essentially is, uh, stepping over the line. So I support this, uh, resolution. I think it's a good, um, step in the right direction. I'm very, um, encouraged that we have a, a piece in here to, uh, promote, um, a public education campaign and a, and, and trying to get everybody on board in town. You know, I wish that we had leadership at higher levels of, uh, state government, and, and, uh, maybe that will come, but until then, we have to learn, look out for the, uh, health of our own citizens, our neighbors, and our friends, and, and everyone else that lives in River Falls, and that's, um, a responsibility that I take seriously. So I will support this. Thank, thank you.
Who's next?
That was Mr. Watson.
Thanks, Hal. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Gagne? Yeah, I think so.
Stop my video just in case there's, uh, other issues. Um, I'm in support of this. Um, I do believe masks are definitely a benefit within close proximity of folks. Um, I, I am in favor of voluntary measures. Um, one thing that I would note, it's been already noted, is that it is up to the individual business owner and the individual patrons. Um, I've seen people from all walks of life, all ages, even months ago, walking into grocery stores, um, even some of those in the higher ages, walking in without masks and socializing with others and congregating. That's, that's an individual responsibility and a liberty that they have of their own. I am in favor of wearing a mask, um, if you so choose to. Um, but one, one thing we have to remember is, these businesses, um, are privately owned. They get to make a choice whether they want to support, um, um, masks or they don't, just like the city government does here. We require masks in the individual building, um, and that's the city's prerogative to do that. Um, I'm in favor of, um, voluntary recommendations. Um, if, if there was an ordinance that came forward, I would not be in favor of it, um, due to be, it is, um, up to those individual people to make those decisions. And I've received, uh, about equal, um, from both sides, minus maybe the petition that came forward today. Um, I've received plenty of petitions at the city level, and it's hard to decipher, um, are those residents from River Falls or not until we, um, sift through those. Um, now, I've received emails from a lot of people on both sides of the tracks. I've talked to a lot of people, um, people of faith, uh, faith leaders, uh, people that are business owners, um, just individual residents, um, in person, on the phone, via email, via social media. Um, I've seen, I've seen the, pretty equally across the board. Um, and, and I don't think it's, uh, a hard thing to do to ask folks to wear a mask, but I'm surely not going to mandate them to do that if, um, and I'll be voting in favor of this today.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yep, Sean.
As we know, or should know, uh, the smoking ban ordinance originated in Minnesota, and it didn't magically happen, but when people realized the importance of it, it was very easy to pass when they valued the service they were getting. Uh, in this sense, when we talk about the practicality of enforcement, we already have laws that aren't practical, such as speed limits and using turn signals, which cannot always be enforced, but when they are enforced, they absolutely save lives. And that's the practicality of a strong ordinance and speaks for itself, without question. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. So does anybody else have anything on this? Yep, Mr. Plunkett. Oh, hang on, Mr. Plunkett was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to propose another amendment to this. That would be to remove the exemptions I, J, and K. I think that those exemptions remove the effectiveness of this ordinance for I and J, excuse, excuse me, of this resolution, my error. And for item K, we are talking about a matter of people, uh, causing risk to others, and I would offer those people the same advice that has been offered to people that choose to wear masks, which is that if they don't like the rules, they can stay home or go elsewhere. Your view, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Uh, so we have a first and a second on the amendment. Is there any other comments on the, the amendment first? Yep, go ahead, Diane.
Thank you. I, um, um, I won't be voting for this, um, well, for a couple of reasons. I think, um, realistically, if you're in a restaurant and you're eating a hamburger, it's...
You're, you're cutting out, Diane.
Uh, enforce, okay, sorry. Um, uh, I, I think it would be very hard to enforce. So can you hear me now?
Yep, very good.
Okay. Um, uh, I won't be, um, supporting this because I think it's, uh, J would be very hard to even encourage. Um, if someone is eating or drinking, I think they should be able to take the mask off for that. And, um, I don't believe that, um, if there's a religious belief that, um, we have, that we should interfere with that. So those are my reasons. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Any other comments on the resolution or on the, uh, amendment by Mr. Plunkett?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to remind other, other council members that, um, regardless of our religion, it does not give us the right to infringe other people's, uh, pursuit of life and liberty and pursuit of happiness.
Anybody else have any other comments? Yep, Mr. Plunkett?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I've looked through the city code. I can't recall any other instance where we have issued a exemption from other items in the city code regarding religion. Am I in error there? Could, did I miss something as I read the code? Is there something I missed, or is this a standard practice?
No, I think that's a loaded question, but Mr. Simpson, can you answer that for him?
Is there any constitutional principles that come in with it?
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Gerhardt might be chomping at the bit to answer, but let me, let me give you, let me give you a summary of what I think. So first of all, um, I'm, I'm not aware of any specific exemptions related to religious, um, practices for any particular thing, so that, I mean, that would be the straight answer. Um, if it was unconstitutional, if there's, and I can't give you an example, but if there's some ordinance that we passed that some- that somehow infringes um, a constitutional protected right, obviously that would be, be invalidated by, you know, the constitution trumps, um, trumps the, any ordinance that would be invalidated by that. And as far as construction of this resolution, I will, I will tell you that we, the reason there's A through K is, is not any magic formula. It's, it's a mixture of a number of resolutions, ordinances, and other actions by city councils and village boards across the, primarily across the state of Wisconsin, um, but, but also in, in other areas. So, um, from policy perspective, I think it's up to the council if they want to include that or not. Um, from a resolution standpoint, I just mentioned that if, if we, if the goal is to encourage or, or strongly recommend, as the, the resolution says, then providing some level, staff felt that providing some level of exceptions clearly stated in the resolution was helpful and people um, kind of not summarily dismissing the resolution and saying, well, okay, here they've thought of some things and, and so it seems reasonable if I can fit into these categories to, to do so. Um, so that's, as far as construction of the resolution, I think that's why we're, where it's at, where it's at. No individual council member or the mayor directed specific exemptions.
Okay, other comments on this, on the amendment?
Chris, you heard here, I figured I'd just weigh in briefly.
Thanks, Chris.
So, I'm not aware of, you know, the particular ordinance that has exemptions for um, First Amendment issues. And those are pretty much baked in to begin with, but given the litigation surrounding these types of issues, I think it's prudent to have such an exemption. Um, now, the resolution here is a, a strong suggestion rather than a mandate, so it's less of a concern if it's removed here. Uh, but as City Administrator Simpson said, I think it provides the public with some flexibility if you're hoping to encourage voluntary compliance. I would have more concerns if there wasn't a First Amendment gathering exemption from an actual ordinance would be, which would be enforceable.
Thank you, Mr. Gerhardt. Okay, anybody else have any comments on the amendment? Okay, so Christie, we have a first and a second on the amendment?
Mr. Plunkett?
Hi.
Odine?
No.
Watson?
Nay.
Gagne?
Oh.
Morissette?
Oh.
Downing?
Aye.
Beerstead?
No.
Five to two.
Okay, so that mandate is not passed. So back to the original discussion on the original uh, resolution. Was there any other discussion on it?
Mr. Mayor, I think, Mr. Gagne?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
One thing that I would like to uh, have more proof on, if we were to ever get an ordinance, um, and it goes to masking today, um, if we were to ever require masking, I would love um, very bona fide evidence, um, that masking in a long-term setting um, doesn't cause harm um, to an individual of all ages. I think that's a very um, good thing for us to take a look at in the future if we were to look at more of a mandate versus a voluntary. Um, I just spent two weeks um, in Georgia and Florida wearing a mask um, because it was mandated in some of the areas I was. And it is brutal, absolutely brutal to have to wear those masks. Granted that some of those were outdoor settings, but everything in this here um, pretty much lays out a lot of those things that we're taking care of. Um, and just like I experienced down in those areas, I've experienced here, severe sanitation going on in these uh, establishments. Um, they're taking this stuff extremely serious. Um, they're maintaining social distancing by requiring um, spread apart tables and wait lines and all of those types of things. So for the establishments I regular here in River Falls, um, obviously I've done, I'm doing a self-quarantine because I just got back and I don't, that, that's my boat, my personal decision. But here, when I do regular establishments, I haven't noticed any of the establishments that I frequent, restaurants, other businesses, not take this seriously. Obviously, even if they require masks, we're not going to be able to guarantee that people are gonna follow the rules. Um, there are going to be um, rule breakers, but I will be voting in favor of this. I think it's a fantastic measure and it's a great promoting tool for the city.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just wanted to um, appreciate uh, Councilmember Gagne's perspective, although it's different, and the civility um, we have as a council uh, here today. Um, so thank you and, and all their council members, regardless of how you do it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution to uh, pass the recommending to use the free face coverings in public in the city River Falls with Diane's amendment attached.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Plunkett? Beerstead?
Aye.
Morissette? Gagne?
Yes.
Downing?
Aye.
Odine?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want to just take a quick second here to put my two cents worth in on this resolution. Um, personally, I think this is a good resolution. Um, I spent uh, last week meeting City Administrator, uh, Mr. Simpson, had uh, two different meetings with business owners in town. Uh, and, and first, I'd like to, I'd like to personally let all the business owners in town know that uh, we do support you, uh, we do have your backs, and we are here for you, whatever we can possibly do to help you through these tough times. We're here for you. Um, but after meeting with the, with the business owners, it made it a lot, a lot easier for me to be okay with this sort of resolution in town. Um, we met with them and most of the owners are not in favor of any kind of ordinance in town. Most of them want to take that on themselves. Um, we talked about different things that we need to see, that I feel comfortable, I will feel more comfortable moving forward with the resolution, that I can see from these business owners and that they understand it and they're all trying to work towards that. Um, we talked about different things that they are doing, uh, different things they want to do different. Um, they know in the long run, by making their businesses look safe and feel safe for customers, this will be the best financial decisions they can make in the long run. Because the more and more people that are comfortable there, the more people are going to shop there and the more people they're going to tell that, hey, I went here and here, I felt really comfortable, it's a good place to shop. So I think they're all starting to realize that that is a good financial decision for them um, as they move forward. Um, the other thing we kind of talked about a little bit is, you know, a lot of these businesses are affected by the school district and UWRF coming back. And they know that for these places to succeed, businesses have to do what they can to keep people safe as they come into these businesses. So I think a lot of them are getting on board of that. And we did talk about, one thing we talked about was um, the city and working with them and trying to get a page together that these businesses can send us everything they're doing in their shop, whether it's masks, cleaning, moving tables, moving chairs, whatever they're doing to make it, make it as safe as they possibly can, not only for their workers, but for the citizens that come in there. And they can send that information to us and we can get that on a, on a website, on our city page, with link to our city page. So people can look at that and say, oh, look, so-and-so is doing this. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable. I'll be okay going there and shopping. So I think getting that information out as we work along through this will do a lot towards that too. So, you know, and as far as a lot of the council members bring up the whole um, concept of people being more civil towards each other, that, that's, it kind of, it makes me feel bad that we have to remind people of this. I mean, this is River Falls. This is a town that shows compassion, shows kindness, shows respect. I don't think we should have to constantly berate our citizens that they have to do this. I think most people know this is a good way to operate and I encourage everybody to keep doing it. I see majority of people doing that, so I would like to encourage people to keep doing this. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was...
Mr. Mayor, is this the time period for us to uh, make random statements about our feelings or is this?
I'm, Mr. Mr. Plunkett, I listen to you, you will listen to me. I'm talking, giving my opinion on the resolution now.
Yeah, uh, which agenda item is this? I thought we had already...
This is a resolution agenda item. This is my opinion on the resolution item.
We had already voted on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, that's why I'm giving my opinion now. So I understand both sides of the argument on this. I, I understand the side that we should wear masks. I'm almost 60. I have an immune deficiency disorder, a disease. I, I understand, believe me, I get scared too. I understand the other side of it. It's, you know, people have to do what they're comfortable with. And that's what our businesses are trying to do now, to help people make more, feel more comfortable. So as we move along through this, I think we need to keep working together on this and keep moving forward. So, um, that's about it. That's all I have to say. I hope that's okay with you, Mr. Plunkett. So we can, we can move along on to the next thing, which is...
Personal privilege, Mr. Mayor.
What, what do you need?
I believe that that comment regarding civility was directed at myself. As such, I am going to reply. I find it to be extremely uncivil to act in a way that causes pandemic spread and spreads a festering pile of pestilence through our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next we have, oops, let's go on to reports. So the first report is a biannual strategic plan update. Uh, this is from the first and second quarters. And our assistant to the city administrator, Mr. Brant Johnson, will provide us a little presentation. You there, Brant?
Yes, uh, here.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Yes, so, let me see, okay. Can you s- see me here?
You should share your screen. We can see you and you should be able to share whatever documents you need, Brant.
Yes, so I, in interest of time, I, uh, would not present or compile a presentation just because of the topics for um, tonight's agenda. That, that can be provided at a later date, if you can like.
Or if you...
What was that, Scott?
Yeah, or if there's questions, we have the report is included in the packet. We'd be happy to, to answer any. The work of the city goes on. That's what's included in the report. Despite all the, the new things that we have on our plate.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so Brant, you really don't have a presentation for us? That's okay. We, that's okay. The, the report's in there. I read it. I'm assuming all the other council members are. So if anybody has any questions, now would be the time. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment?
Go ahead, Diane.
No, I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate these regular reports on our, our, our plans. Um, they're, I think, a very good tool for keeping us on track. So, uh, they...
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, let's go on to the administrator's report. If anybody's got anything for Scott or Scott, there's anything you want to communicate to us?
Yeah, my, my report is included. I'd be happy to take any questions. Um, but I don't, I also do not have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
And I had, and I'm the one that suggested to Brant that he need not have a PowerPoint presentation for this evening.
Nope, that's perfectly fine.
And should have communicated that to the mayor.
Nope, that's perfectly fine. So does anybody, anybody have any questions or anything for Scott? Okay, move on to the comptroller's report with Ms. Odine.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the comptroller's report for June 2020. General fund revenues through the first half of the year were $4,635,719, or 42% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in the month of June included $41,472 in building permit fees. Expenditures for the same period were $4,501,872, or 41% of budgeted expenses. Expenditures for the month of June included $9,447 in COVID response expenses. Expenditures um, for the month, uh, the net of revenues over expenditures as of June 30th is $133,919.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, now, we're, we're recessing to closed session per Wisconsin state statutes, 19.85 IG for the following purposes: to confer with legal counsel for a governmental body that is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy with respect to litigate, litigation required to closed session, to wit subdivision review. So Christie, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, we need a second. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recessing to closed session.
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, just for a point of clarification, um, for the council on public, that the item to be discussed tonight, um, there is not an expectation that the council will return to, to open session and, and uh, take any action. So this, this will conclude the public portion of the, the video and council recessing to closed session under the state statute and, and then we'll simply come back and to, to open session just to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to say that. Thank you, Scott. And Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Odine? Downing?
Aye.
Morissette?
Aye.
Gagne?
Okay, yep.
I'm sorry, Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Beerstead?
Aye.
Plunkett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, we are in closed session. So let's give it a couple minutes here.
Yes, please.